This meeting is called to order. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Education. I'm going to ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment in silence, but I want to invite, we have the honor and privilege of having the Girl Scout Trooper 511 come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
What do we do next? Oh.
I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Trombetta to present the We Are SAG Superintendents Report.
Good evening, everyone. Wonderful job, girls. We appreciate you coming out tonight. I'm going to turn it over right now to the Legislative Committee to do a quick presentation for us and give us where they're at with all the work they've been doing.
So Jim Kiernan and Paul Sapienza, it's your turn. We're respectful of your time.
This won't take long. Mr. Scavo, board members, Superintendent Trombetta, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that we are closer than ever in getting the School Security Guard Training Enhancement Act passed. As most of you know, I started this project years ago when I saw the need for a specific training for security guards that work in our schools. When we first met the Legislative Committee this year, our goal was to find an assembly person who would write a sister bill to the Senate version of the bill. That bill, the Senate version of the bill had already passed twice and is going up for a third time. The problem was always in the Assembly. So we set out to find somebody in the Assembly that would pick up a sister bill. The problem was always getting that bill out of committee in the Assembly. The first two times, it was carried by Assemblywoman Kim Jean-Pierre, and it was never brought to the floor for a vote. She didn't run for another term. Now the bill needed a new sponsor, and that's what we set out to do on the committee. She didn't run for another term. So in the interim, and before we got to do that, Assemblyman Quanille O'Farrell did write a sister bill, A5079B, to Senator Martinez's bill, S194, and that bill currently sits in the Assembly's Economic Development Committee. So our new task as a committee is to lobby its movement out of that committee. With that in mind, we met on Monday with Assemblywoman Rebecca Cassay, who happens to be a member of the Economic Development Committee, and graciously, she promises to lobby and push for that legislation to get to the floor of the Assembly from a vote, and that's from the inside. So I don't think we can find a better lobbying person than somebody that sits on the actual committee. I don't have a timetable for that, but we are definitely closer than ever before. I also reached out today as well, a couple of days ago, to Assemblyman O'Farrell to set up a meeting with him to get his opinion on how we could push for this bill out of committee as well, since it is his bill. And on that note, I just want to take this moment to thank you guys, the SAG Board of Education, for all the support in making this endeavor so close to a reality, because, believe me when I say this, without your input and your resolution that you guys made, this bill would have died years ago. It never would have got to this point. So I really want to just thank you for everything you've done. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions in the board? Should we just, the bill, the bill in the Assembly that was introduced, what was the number again?
Sorry, again?
The bill that was...
The number?
Yeah.
The number in the Assembly is 507A, 5079B, and the Senate version is S194.
Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, question, Mike Magisturnia?
Yeah, Mike?
Hi. Jim, so first question, do you see this hold up being parliamentary, or you think there's opposition to the bill?
I don't think there's any opposition at all. The Senate, it flew by. I think there was only a handful of senators that voted no. Everybody else voted yes. This particular bill that sits in the Assembly Committee now has a dozen cosponsors already, bipartisan as well. So I don't see any objection to it.
So looking over the horizon, much like when you do a real estate closing and you buy a house, you tell the buyer now the fund really begins? So if you do manage to get this, or we do manage to get this signed by the governor, the next step, of course, is going to be the curriculum?
Correct.
So do you see the Legislative Committee having any role in helping to mold that? Do you think they're going to leave that to the...
I think at that point, it'd be well out of our hands. It'll be in the Department of Criminal Justice and the state, and between SED and the Department of Criminal Justice and the state police and all the other organizations, that they would form committees to write the curriculum. I think our work would have been done at that point.
There would be no role for like school district security site leaders and like Patrick and stuff to help mold that curriculum?
I don't know if they would ask that, but it would be a smart thing to do is to use, you know, local security personnel to find, you know, to help write it. I haven't really looked that far down the road. I'm happy to be just where we are at the moment, but I don't foresee any of that really being an issue. I think within a year's time, they'll probably have the curriculum written, and then all the security guard training schools that we have throughout the entire state and all the school districts that are also security guard training academies themselves will have the curriculum and be able to give it to their guards, again, in the normal eight-hour annual training that they have to do anyway. It'll just be a different curriculum.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much, Ms. Kiernan.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Sapienza. I'm also a co-chair of the Legislative Committee. I apologize for being out of the room when you began. I thought on the agenda, we were one of the last items, so I didn't see the rush. All right. Let me just tell you from my perspective, what I envision is the role of the Legislative Committee. I believe that we're an arm of the board, and we are here to follow your direction. That's primarily the first thing I'd like to say. We're not an autonomous group that's going to go out there and do our thing and not report back to you. Obviously, we think we work for you. You tell us where you'd like us to concentrate our efforts, and we will do that. Having said that, the board, from its very inception, had seen a desire on the part of the board for the committee to address at least, what I saw, three primary things, and they were funding, funding, and funding. To that end, we have looked at a number of issues, anything from pre-K to special education needs, to just general funding. We've looked at all of that. Some of the committee members have identified some legislation that the committee may wish to recommend to the board that we support or oppose, and we're in the preliminary stages of that. The role, as I see, of a Legislative Committee is primarily to, once you give us the direction, is either to support or oppose legislation. Where the board is split, obviously, stay neutral if there's pending legislation, if that's your desire, or if there's something we've identified and you have an interest in it, it would be our job to find willing legislators to introduce legislation to accomplish those goals. At every step of the way, I believe it is our role, especially through our liaisons on the board, to inform the board of everything that we're doing. Anytime you would call on us to do what we're doing tonight, I'd be happy to do that. A couple of things I'd just like to say on the funding issue, you know, we've looked at a couple of things, whether it be the combined wealth ratios, there's the regional, the RCI, the Regional Cost Index, and so forth. In looking at all these things, it seems that it is written, the legislation is written with a level of complexity that you have to investigate this stuff to figure if there's any little loopholes that you could either exploit or manipulate. There are some you have to be careful about. We looked at those that could actually negatively affect funding. But one of the things that I noticed as far as the combined wealth formulas is that the SAG school districts' citizens, the people that occupy the area, have to come up with about 53% of the funding, excuse me, 47% of the funding for what the state deems is the appropriate amount because they consider it wealthy. I mean, I live in the community. I don't particularly consider myself all that wealthy, but we have to figure out ways to see if there's any things in here that could either be tweaked, manipulated, or adjusted, and certainly, if there's anything that we have any ideas on, we'll share it directly with the board through the liaisons, and if you give us the mission to go forward, we'll certainly try to attack that. Also, one of the things that we've identified is the need to find friends outside the area. And, you know, if I didn't already say this, I apologize. My background is I was a legislative chair for my local union for 35 years, and I also was a member of the Legislative Committee for the District of CWA, that's the Communication Workers. There is, I have gone through in my lobbying efforts, whether it be at the federal or the state level, and even at sometimes the county level, where it is controlled by one party or the other. Sometimes it's split, sometimes it flips. You have to attack this in a nonpartisan way if you're going to make any progress, and we have to figure out a way for members of both parties to take credit for legislation. You know, believe it or not, in the State House, one of my experiences has been that if there is a controlling party in a particular house, they will not allow the opposing party to come onto bills as sponsors because they don't want them to get any credit. Now, you can actually lobby to allow that to happen, and I think that would be a worthwhile goal. You want to make these bills as nonpartisan, as supported by as many politicians as you can, and the one thing I've said is, we may not agree on everything, we do agree about our kids. You know, anything that benefits our children is what we should be working on. So as it relates to the committees, I'll just give you an example. In the Education Committee in the Assembly, the total number of members represents about 150 Assembly, okay, about 20% of the Assembly. When you look at our Suffolk County representatives, both Democrat and Republican, we're down to 3.2% of the total Assembly. Actually, 0.7% of the total Assembly. We're about 3% of the committee. So you can't just depend on everybody from your immediate area. We have to make friends elsewhere. And I'll give you an example of some, an idea that I had about trying to make a friend. We are combined in the RCIs with New York City. My initial intuition is the higher the cost, the more support, and my initial intuition turned out to be correct. However, in doing the research initially, I said, maybe it's the opposite way because I saw that Westchester was combined, and I believed at the time, with Long Island and New York City. Turns out, they weren't. They were with Hudson County, and as a result, by them getting legislation to remove them from the Hudson Valley RCI, their index number actually went up that increased their funding, okay? And who was the chair of the committee that did that? A Westchester legislator. So we have to reach out beyond our area, make friends, get supporters, and I promise to try to do that on behalf of the board. And as I said, we will report everything we're doing, and we work at your direction. Any questions or...
Questions in the board?
I'm sorry?
Meredith?
So with that said, does the board have anything specific, or Michelle, anything specific that you would like us to work on? Because we have a lot of really great members, and they're very tenacious, but we need a little bit of direction from you guys.
We, by the way, I didn't mention it, and I forgot to mention initially, we are looking at the unfunded mandates, and one of the things we want to do as it relates to unfunded mandates is to take the line that's very expensive on these items and then dissect them as to what goes into them, what are the components, what would we save, what wouldn't we save, what would just get moved over to a different line? And if there's anything we can suggest there, we'll bring that to the board. I'm sorry. I apologize for not giving you that information.
The other guy that I think we need to immediately, because it's something on the, you know, coming up real soon, is the allocation of funding for UPK. You know, I know you mentioned it. You know, we're awarded a $500 amount, is it $3 million?
Or we're not spending everything that...
We're not spending it all. But the thing is that they haven't raised the allocation amount in years, in fact, in 18 years, since I've been on the board. It hasn't gone up. So the thing is, is that we, as a board, are not asking for any additional money in that area because we're not even spending what they're giving us. But the problem that we're having is that, you know, the provider is not able to provide the same services at the same dollar amount today as they were, you know, in 2006 and 2007, you know, and that's an issue. You know, the board is certainly facing some fiscal challenges, you know, and if we had to take $500,000, $600,000, $700,000 out of our budget to offset the cost of UPK, I'm not sure that we could even do it.
Okay. Are you specifically talking about the pre-K?
Universal pre-K.
Okay. There is a bill pending in Westchester. Any bill that didn't get reported out of committee gets automatically reintroduced, and the focus of that legislation, which is by a Westchester legislature, was to increase the enrollment of pre-K. And in looking at that, that person put penalties in his bill for not increasing your participation in pre-K. And one of the things that I thought that we might look at is seeing if we could get him to amend his bill to allow us to access the funds that we're currently not spending on the allocation towards those efforts, whether it be renovating classrooms, whether it be allowing us to use it to increase the funding we pay to, you know, because of our high costs to our vendors. So we've looked at that, and I think there's $1 million that's probably available if we could tweak his bill. I think there's a way of accessing that, but we're looking at all that, I promise you.
I think the big thing is the allocation amount. You know, if they allocated $5,500 per child, you know, back in 2007, it can't be $5,500 per child today because everything's gone up in the 20-year period. So if they raise it to 65,000, if you're to 7500, we would be able to, you know, not have to take money, taxpayer money, to offset the cost of what's supposed to be a free program.
Well, one of the things they do in determining these funds is they're using base years of 2020 and 2021. It might be worth looking at to see if they change the base years, and if that would have an effect on us. That's why I'm saying there might be items that could be tweaked that doesn't necessarily change the law dramatically, that might increase funding, and we're looking at everything. I promise you, we are.
Perfect. Any other questions in the board? No? Any charges or, you know, in years past when, oh, I'm sorry, Sabrina, you have some?
In years past, when we couldn't come up with charges, you know, of some of the things, because some things are so far out of reach that, you know, in one particularly, you're not going to be able to grasp, for example, tans, you know, being able to align our fiscal schedule with, you know, New York State's, you know, fiscal schedule. There's certain things that we're not going to be able to do right away, but are there things that the committee is looking at that they would like to, you know, to be tasked with that they think is a feasible charge?
Well, we're looking at all pending legislation that affects school districts, wherever you are, to see if there's positive or negative impacts. We're looking at various things that we might ask for modifications, like the preschool to free up those fundings, and if the board has anything specific they want us to address, we'll research it, even if it requires us to find a legislator to introduce new legislation to attract, attack that issue. Now, just be mindful that all legislation that is put forth to be introduced has to be done by the first Tuesday in April. Anything beyond that, you can't get new bills unless you get the full Rules Committee. It's a whole nightmare. So whatever it is that we're going to do to get legislation that's either not in now or legislation that's pending to be modified or decide what we're going to support or whatever, we're coming up against a deadline, and we're looking that, beginning with the early part of next year, we shift our gears to the support or opposition in getting bills moved through committees.
Sabrina, do you have something?
I still think that the Legislative Committee should be working on charter schools. There's a big momentum with that right now, and I think we need to be pushing the information out specifically towards how SUNY is approving and rubber stamping them and technically not following what the whole idea of charter schools were, and that is leaking millions of dollars out of public school. And when that money does come out of public schools, there's little to no transparency, and I have a problem with taxpayer money going to something that's being run like a private sector. If it's private sector, public money should not be doing that, and there's no transparency to it. So I think that's a huge thing that's draining the public schools right now, and many districts, not just SAG, are facing huge financial challenges when you're seeing half a million to $2 million a year getting funneled out to charter schools. And again, they're popping up left and right on our community, and again, I have nothing against parental choice. I have an issue with how they're coming up, how they're being approved, and then how the money, the taxpayer money, is then not being transparent once it's being sent to these charter schools.
I'm reluctant to put in my personal feelings on any of this, but I have not been a fan of charter schools. I think they drain away from the public school budget and so forth. Looked at a couple of things on that, and I'm not exactly certain how much of what gets attributed to charter schools right now are simply accounting or actual money that we're missing out on. So in other words, if that student wasn't in the charter school and we pass that money to them, if they were with us, would we have the same cost? So we haven't completely analyzed it.
It comes down to accountability of that money. There are certain ways that money, we as a public school are allowed to spend that money, and they don't have those same policies.
But if we didn't have the charter school, we'd have the student. That's what I'm saying.
And we wouldn't have the tuition.
You'd have the cost, is what I'm saying. That's the only thing I'm saying.
But I just think the focus needs to be on the process of SUNY approving them and making sure that they're really holding these schools to the standards that they're supposed to be, and also that they're held to the same accountability and the spending of the money. We're told how we have to spend the money, and we have to show that to the state. It doesn't necessarily happen. So those are my concerns, I think, that the Legislative Committee, I mean, I don't want to knock the people in the buildings that are, you know, teaching children, you know, those are still good people who want best for kids, but I think the process and the transparency of the money is something that if we're going to do that, that we should be focusing on.
If there's something specific you'd like the committee to look at, just let us know, and we'll be up for research.
I think just getting out there, there's a huge push right now. I know in the district I work in, it's a lot out there, social media, I'm seeing it from a lot of districts pushing it. I just think that it needs to be loud and clear that they need to, there needs to be more transparency with how they are being approved and how they're being funded, and when the money's given to them, how that money's being spent.
Paul, a perfect example is SUNY has already approved them to open up in the William Floyd area. They don't have a location, they don't have a building, and they've already been approved. So they're not going through any approval process that a public school would have to go through. So as Sabrina's saying, they're saying they're public, but yet they get to pick who can come and go. They don't, they can say no to a student. They don't have to approve students where we can't say yes or no to students. We have an open enrollment, and if we have a child that attends and only for a month, they get all the money. We don't get that back.
Right. I understand that.
And they don't open their books. There's no public budget where you go through a report. They don't answer to any FOIL requests. So they say they're running as a public school, but they are running more privately. So just those facts.
Well, if there's more specific information you want us to look at, just share it with Meredith and Stephanie, and we'll be happy to look at it.
It's in Newsday as well. They posted a big article, I know everybody probably read it the other day, about superintendent salaries, some of the highest ones. They're not in there. They're quadruple what superintendents make. The people that are there, superintendents running their schools, are making quadruple.
They don't call them superintendents.
No, they don't, but they are, but they are.
Stephanie?
One of the issues we're having as a Legislative Committee, and I was going to bring this up during our legislative update, but we can do it now and just do it, is we need specific charges because there's so many things to tackle, even giving us a list of unfunded mandates. We have so many unfunded mandates. We had another committee member bring up tonight, tax abatements with all the new projects that are going around in the community, how we're already being hurt by ones that have been put in, and we had these discussions 15 years ago as a district. So if possible, and maybe when we come back to the legislative update, if we could all just think of really specific charges, because they're all really, and I know I've said this, chomping at the bit to help, so we would want to have X, Y, and Z so that I can say to our committee, please work on X, Y, and Z. And charter schools has been a thorn in our side since last year when we were rallying, the year before when we were rallying. It's a huge issue, and it's only compounding on itself, you know?
And if I could just say something about the unfunded mandates, we, just as a natural thing, looked at the most expensive ones as the first things we should look at, and as I look down the list of unfunded mandates, there are certain ones that are very small and don't make any sense as far as being on the list of me. For example, there was a $5,000 line for inspecting fire extinguishers. If the state didn't mandate, I'd like to believe that we would do it anyway because we want to make sure our fire extinguisher is working, God forbid there's a fire and there's kids in the class, you know? So those things aren't there, but we're looking at the most expensive. If there are items on that list that aren't tremendously expensive, $50,000 or whatever it is, $10,000, you want us to look at it? Let us know, and we'll research it and see what's going on with it, and we'll see if there's a solution to it, and then we'll bring it to the board and say, here's our ideas, and then do you want us to run with it or not?
Mike, and then we'll come back to Meredith.
Is back on the charter school issue there. We had the charter school setting up over there in St. Joseph's. It was very, for me, it was very eye-opening at some of the things we were required to do that I didn't think should have been our responsibility. One of them, for instance, is just because they're housed in our district, whether they have any of our kids or not, we have to provide the nurse, right? We have to pay for the nurse. I don't understand how that's part of the educational track, right? If they need to have a nurse on site, then they should hire a nurse.
I would agree with you.
I think we also provide textbooks, right? We provide the textbooks, but they might not even be our kids. So there's things in that law that force the public school system to do to support what I would deem to be not related to the child attending, right? Now, they may need a nurse, yes, there may be a child that needs a nurse, but they should hire a nurse. They might even have any of our kids, right? So those are the kind of things, maybe Michelle could give you a list of things not related.
I would be happy to receive them, and especially if they can afford to pay their superintendent four times what we're paying ours, they should be able to afford a nurse.
It's not going to solve, you know, it's not going to solve the issue, but it certainly was, I found it to be...
What I have found in my experience with lobbying is that sometimes if you get a small item that isn't spread over the whole state, but it's a small item that can be put into a bill as an amendment that attacks an exact problem like that, it might benefit more than just SAG, but it's not an overall giant budget expenditure that somebody goes, we can't afford this. It just quietly gets inserted in the bill, and the overall importance of the bill means the bill passes on its own without that extra provision. So if you could identify those things for us, we'd be happy to look at it.
Meredith?
So my takeaway would be, I think very specifically, and you guys can agree or disagree, but I would say that we are going to have you guys do a deep dive into the transparency or lack thereof of charter schools and how we can make changes to that. And then we're going to see if we can get some opening up of the pre-K funding. There's so much red tape with the pre-K funding that they give us this big bubble of money, but you have to spend it specific, 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 so then at the end of the day, that big bubble turns into just this little bit, and all the rest of it goes back. Well, if you're willing to give us all of that money anyway, if you take away all of these little bindings that you've put on it, then let us spend it. Now, of course, we're not going to spend that big amount of money on 10 children, so yes, there has to be some rules and regulations, but not the way that it's being funded now. So I think that very specifically, those are two major things that we could really spend some time on, and, you know, instead of each one of us spinning our wheels elsewhere, let's get, working on this, and if, you know, if we do so great that we need more after that, then that would be great. But like right now, I feel like we're, we have a lot of really great, really passionate people, but we're not, we're not getting from A to B because we're not drilling down.
Just so you know, that legislation I told you that was being introduced in Westchester with the intent of increasing participation in pre-K, the penalties, the stick... with the intent of increasing participation in pre-K, the penalties, the sticks that he put into that bill, if you didn't spend the entire amount of money they allocate you, every single one of the board members has to go to a two-day training for 12 hours and then they deduct it from your budget.
Right.
So you'd have less money to spend if you had to go to the training.
But here, we wouldn't even be able to do that because we don't even have the space to take on the children that we want. So things like that are things that we definitely need to work on.
Right. So my idea was to allow the state to allow, insert into that bill, the ability as far as the stick is the carrot, to allow you to spend that unused money on things other than the exact thing of tuition, where you might need to renovate a space or you may need to subsidize what you're already paying your vendor to allow you to use that other million dollars to alleviate the impediment to doing what they're really looking for us to do.
Am I saying your name?
Yeah, Rob, I think for the sake of the audience, people who don't know, I know Paul understands, the real, the issue with the UPK is we get our allotment of six to seven million dollars. We're only allowed to spend so much per, I'm sorry, three, only allowed to spend so much per child, right? The law right now is, I think it's $5,800 per child?
Yes, somewhere in that range.
However, we don't provide the service. We have to by law outsource it. Our outsourced vendor is saying, I can't do it for $5,800 per child. I need $6,200 per child.
Right. Not right now. There was a deficit of approximately $400 that always plugged, but that doesn't mean the deficit will grow in other years.
Well, the problem is, of course, we'd have to use general fund money.
Exactly. And that's why we would like to them to allow us to use that million dollars, not just for the specific, but the support of the effort. That's all I'm saying.
Dennis?
One other thing that we have to definitely look into is PLAs. So they're coming in with, there's a lot of competitive bidding when we do construction work. Well, it's project labor, sorry, project labor agreements. So whenever we're doing all these things, we put things out to bid properly. We have companies that meet whatever criteria they have to meet to be able to work. And I believe the unions are trying to fight the fact of not having prevailing wage companies compete with them and whatnot. So that's going to raise, and they're fixing the numbers. They're coming back to us telling us, this is what a project will cost. So if we have $10 million to spend and we have 10 projects, anything more than, I believe, a million dollars, they're gonna have to go into this PLA and we're gonna end up doing five projects now instead of 10 a year. And we're just giving away free money. And Michelle could probably touch a little better on this.
I just heard from a colleague before we came down for the meeting that there is an addition, that PLA legislation has unanimous support right now. And there's a big push to get it passed before the end of the year. And they're not looking to make, I know that we've had discussions that they were going to modify it, maybe increase the threshold to, you know, some higher amount than $1 million, because what capital project costs, you know, less than a million dollars? There aren't any. But it looks like now they're pushing that legislation through without any amendments. They're keeping it at the $1 million threshold.
And that means if that happens as well, that's not what we budgeted for on our budget.
No. So the $9 million that we budgeted, we won't be able to complete all of those projects.
Correct. If there's anything you need us to specifically look at, we'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
Jessica?
I was just gonna say to go back, and it's safe to assume that these charter schools won't be upheld to having to use those prevailing wages or anything. So again, more oversight where we are, our expenses are so controlled on a granular level and dictated from external forces, and these charter schools are coming in and they're not being held to those same requirements. So.
And the PLAs are only for Long Island.
It's Nassau and Suffolk County only.
If there's nothing else, thank you. I'm sorry this went longer than ten minutes.
Okay.
So are we officially, like, are those the two charges that we gave them?
Can I add one more part to the UPK? Can we also look into grants? Because I know some grants expire.
Well, just looking into the expansion grant is what we'd like.
Okay, just expansion? Okay. All right. So-
Charter schools, PLAs, and UPK. That would be the three main ones I think you guys should-
But UPK, funding to access the 1 million extra and then expansion.
Expansion, correct.
Okay. So this is, this is good. I totally agree with all this. And this is stuff we've been bouncing back and forth. I do, I do now have a new feather in my hat about thinking about tax abatements because it was just something we just brought up. But I would, I would like, maybe we'll chop down the list and then come back and add more to the list.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for coming out and presenting. Okay, next, Patty, we have our demography report.
Yes, if I can invite Ross and Tim up, please, for our demography report.
The clicker? Maybe Paul took it. No, I'm kidding. Maybe did they take it by accident for real? Yeah, I think Chris Picar kicked it. Okay. Well, having resolved the technical difficulties, Mr. Chairman.
And this lady over here, yes. Chairman Superintendent Trembetta, good evening. Board members, good evening. I'm just going to give a very brief overview and then turn the report over to my colleague, Tim Ammon. So just on background, late last spring, early last summer, you guys engaged us to take a look at several different aspects of the school district. Primarily, I think it was driven by the fact that this district has seen significant enrollment decreases over the last 15 or 20 years. So engaged us to do enrollment projections, analysis of facility, analysis of facility, and take a look at attendant zones and things like that. And the purpose was to see if there are any way we could find ways to save money by maybe closing schools or maybe redistricting. So Tim is going to present the data, but I need to say this, after all our research, we've been in your schools, we've spoken with your principals, we've had many conversations with the superintendent and the committee, and we learned a number of things along the way. For example, coming in, we didn't realize the extent and the complexity of your special needs program, which is incredible. And so anyway, to make a long story short, I don't want to bury the lead. We're not recommending any change in schools. We're not recommending any closures. We think that the enrollments have stabilized, will stabilize, and that is going to be a recommendation. But let me bring Tim over to go through the whole report and let you know what our rationale was.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Ross mentioned, we had three primary things that we were, that we were really looking to try to accomplish. Oh, the floor, I think. It's, yeah, I do have, I do have flash. Put it over there.
Putting it in my eyes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, she says in this.
We can, it's right here, I think. We can try then-
No, I think it's towards, it's towards that.
Towards that way. No. We can do the next slide thing if everybody's okay with that? Is that all right? We'll take you through it. Yeah, great. Thank you. So again, just from a scope review, Ross mentioned this previously, we were looking at enrollment projections. We were looking at the school boundaries. We were also looking at whether or not we had an opportunity based on those two components to look at any opportunity for closure around either an elementary school or middle schools. And in doing so, there's a baseline in a way that we go about approaching that, which is again, beginning at the beginning, which is if we see on the next, we can skip the next slide just because it's an introduction to the key part of this first component of it, which is the enrollment projections. We mentioned the drop in existing enrollment, and you can see it here that what we see is over a 15-year period, we had about an 11% drop, which represented about 3,100 students. At the same time, we had also already reduced schools by three. And as a consequence, one of the things that we wanted to look at is some of the more near-term activity. And that near-term activity is over the previous five years where we had looked, where as you can see with the line, things have stabilized. And we will, we will track that line going out as we go forward. But they have stabilized. And what we saw is about an 8% reduction at the secondary level, composed of roughly equal distribution between middle school and high school students from a, from a reduction perspective, with approximately 160 elementary school students. And this is essentially where we started from, right? The starting point is this question of, from a historical perspective, where do we, where do we have enrollment from a survivability standpoint? How many kids are coming back in any given year? And being able to use that to project out. So the next slide just gives everybody a little bit of a sense, just process-wise, because there's always a question of how do we get to the numbers that we get to. And ultimately, if you think about enrollment projections, it's kind of easiest to think about it on a base 100 system, right? If we have 100 students in kindergarten in any given year, and in the next year we have 98 students, we have what we refer to as a cohort survival of .98, right? Meaning roughly 98% of the kids have come back to, from kindergarten to first grade. And then we look at that on not only a grade-by-grade basis, but on a school-by-school basis over this historical period to try to understand what some of those long-running averages are for those cohorts in order to be able to use that to try to project out into the future where we think enrollment may, may fall. And so, so from a process perspective, this is a process that is well-worn and well-used, not only across the state, but across the country in order to be able to do this. And it forms the basis of incorporating other elements that we know affect enrollment, things like adjustments for housing, things like adjustments for changes in population and demographics that also go into the mix from, from an enrollment standpoint. And when we use those factors, if we look on the next slide, what we see, and this is incredibly difficult to see unless you're looking at the paper copy, it'll get easier here in a second, but what this gives us is essentially a long-running, 11-year history, not only of previous enrollments, but also of projected enrollments. In addition, one of the things that we're looking at is we're looking at birth rates within the community to see what infill rates for kindergarten look like. And all of those things come together to form these cohort values that allow us to think about from a 2025 perspective out to 2031, what do the numbers look like? And on the next slide, it's a little bit easier to see as we start to trend that information, similar to what we had shown previously. We have a down, a down and to the right trend. However, what's important to note is there's an enormous flatness in that line, meaning that we have a relative stability that is an important consideration for us when we're looking at what are we going to do for school capacity. And I think at least, if not more importantly, is when we start to look into the out-years, especially in 2031, as you'll see here, we actually have an uptick in enrollment in that year. It's slight, but we have an uptick in enrollment in that year. And so certainly from our perspective, a critical understanding that we have to have is if we were to reduce capacity of the schools in any given way, what is that going to do from a program pressure standpoint? What is that going to do from a capacity pressure standpoint around the rest of the district? And is that detrimental to the education environment? And so we do this process, this is focused primarily on the elementary school process. The same process occurs at the middle schools and at the high schools, you know, so that we can look at all the different grade tranches. But from a focus on the, on the elementary perspective, this idea, and Ross mentioned it, the rationale around not closing schools is not only do we have a stability in enrollment, we do actually have a peek at what some potential growth might be. And so, so what we don't want to do is to, is to create problems from an educational programming standpoint by having any kind of drastic reduction in available capacity. Okay? And so we see that from, you know, from the, from the, our assessment of the projections. And in addition, when we look at some of the out-years, right, the big green chart that you saw also included some, also included the middle school and high school years. So it carried out all the way through the 12th grade. One of the things that we see is at the middle school level is really where this growth is coming in, right? So we've got growth at the middle school level. So that gives you some insight into why we had the same rationale around not closing any middle schools. And the elementary school population is effectively stable at 47 students over the five years. So if we think about the number of classrooms we have, that's a net of less than one student per classroom. So again, what we think is the capacity that you have available is capacity that you're going to continue to need. Okay? If we take through this now, just to, you know, we, Ross gave away the good news, so that doesn't leave me with a lot, right? So like, you know, I'll do my best here to make this interesting, however. But what you see, you know, and this is something you're probably all familiar with, right? But, but when we think about this question of, of any kind of school closure, particularly a school closure as a result of enrollment projections, one of the things that we have to think about is if we close a school, where are we going to put them? And the consequence of having to put them somewhere means that we have a bunch of things that are necessary for us to consider. Those things we iterate on the next slide when we're talking about these criteria. Ultimately, right, the core part of this is how many students do we believe are going to be in the district? Second to that is, were we to close a school, what capacity do we have at all of the rest of the schools to try to absorb those students from the one that we were trying, that we would have thought about closing? And then a third component is, once we know how many kids we have and where we might be able to send them, it's really important to think about questions of adjacency, because what we don't want to be doing is dragging kids all over hither and yon. And what we don't want to be doing is moving thousands of kids in order to try to accommodate hundreds of kids, right? So, so from our perspective, when we look at an enrollment projection and we look at a question of closing schools, this, this issue of student counts and adjacencies matter a lot. Again, we're not doing that here, but I think as you go forward and as you're thinking about this, they are criteria to keep in mind. And what we didn't consider as part of this, and obviously it became relevant when we started to think about what other options might be available, things like ongoing costs, facility conditions, those are outside the purview of thinking about it from an enrollment projections perspective, but I'm sure those are all things that you're already addressing in some way. Right? So this is a summary table that looks at each of the individual elementary schools and, and what their changes are, both over a long-run period and as we start to project out. And I think one of the things that's important, we mentioned factors that, that impact enrollment projections. What we are looking to do when we're, if we are looking at, for example, some of the lower enrollment schools like Merrimack, for example, one of the things that we think about is we've got development coming into the community. If we think about Concoman Hub, and we think about Waverly Road, and some of those things, do we have capacity, do we have availability there to try to accommodate some of that in our lower enrollment schools? And does it require us potentially to do certain things in order to be able to get them there? Maybe. But, but one of the things that we are trying to accommodate when we're thinking about this in the long term, long term being sort of this range of the projection period, is knowing what's coming in, are we capable of trying to, trying to have it fit in somewhere? And I think what we've tried to do in terms of maintaining the existing capacity and looking at the existing class sizes and grade balances is, is to be able to manage any of that kind of additional housing growth that may be coming in. Because one of the things that we see when we look at this, you know, again, this is a capacity game, right? It's a sort of supply and demand question, if you think about it. We've got a demand based on the number of students that we have, and we've got a supply, which is the available number of rooms that we have. And so, so when we think about it from that perspective, we talk about capacity availability in two forms. We talk about it in horizontal form and in vertical form, right? Vertical form is a little bit easier to understand if we have a class size target of 24 students and we've got 18 students on average in the class and we've got three sections. That means we've got availability for six students at three sections or 18 students before we needed to think about adding a section, right? So that's this idea of how much more vertically can we go up within an individual classroom? The horizontal component of it is, if we have 20 rooms in a building and we're only using 19, that gives us an opportunity to think about what to do with that section, right? Now, what we see in, in the schools is many of them are using all of the available rooms that they have. And that, as a consequence, means that all of their flexibility is provided in that, in that vertical capacity, right? In that vertical availability. But we do have several schools that have some rooms available where, you know, we do have some horizontal capacity. Again, as we start to think about, as development comes in and as things start happening in the community, where, where might be, we may have space to be able to accommodate that. So, so again, on a go-forward basis, one of the sort of weather eye items that, that are useful to keep an eye on is how are we actually using this both horizontal and vertical capacity to, to manage the ongoing changes in enrollment? Because one of the things that we know is, you know, it's a little bit like a river, right? It's never the same river two days in a row. I mean, we get kids who come in and come out every day. And so, so thinking about how to keep an eye on, on both enrollment and capacity use, these give you some, I think, tools and ideas. these give you some, I think, tools and ideas on how to do that on a go forward basis. So if we, if we do look again, right? With no closure in mind, one of the things that, that we want to be able to think about is how are we accommodating within the schools, the programmatic needs of the schools as well, especially as Ross mentioned with the robust programs that you have for special needs students? How do we ensure that we are continuing to provide for those opportunities? That is, that becomes a question of the capacity and how you use it. And, and we do think that any sort of reduction in capacity would cause a detrimental reduction in that availability, which, you know, again, leads us to thinking that we shouldn't be recommending any, any closures at the elementary level. So if we transition from the elementary schools to the middle schools, again, one of the things that we, you know, we, we go through effectively the same process, we are looking at the counts of individual students, we are looking at the flow patterns for the feed, for the feeders, for the, for where middle schools go from, from elementary schools to middle schools, middle schools to high schools. And when we look again, from, from a middle school perspective, it's more complicated because of the way that scheduling works, right? At secondary levels where we've got, where we've got a multiple, not, we don't have a teacher assigned to the same room all day, where we have kids moving around, right? So we have to think about how that schedule works. And it's a little bit like Tetris where, you know, we have to figure out, how do we get the blocks to line up? And if we have enough blocks lined up, does that give us enough capacity to do anything with it? And if we don't, from a scheduling standpoint, then we don't have enough capacity to, to be able to, to think about any sort of closure question. And from our perspective, if we look at the next slide, when we look at the projections out, it is a similar circumstance to what happens with the elementary school students, where here actually, as we mentioned, there's a little bit of growth that is, that is factored into the middle schools. And so consequently, uh, uh, some growth, no alignment of, of wide variety of additional scheduling space means from our perspective, there's not a, a really great opportunity to think about trying to close a middle school either. So, and again, as we, as we start to, as we start to think through this, the, when we, even in terms of the, the recent declines, the recent declines that we had had actually are relatively nominal when you look at them across the population, right? If we had, you know, roughly 30 kids a building, but we've got 900 kids in the building by itself, right? On a percentage basis, it's a very small percentage of the total population. So, so while it seems like, well, we're, we're freeing up classrooms, the answer is you're not really freeing up classrooms, you're freeing up seats in individual classrooms. And that is a very different circumstance than being able to create a lot of spare capacity, which we don't have. So, and then, you know, again, from, from a high school perspective, this is a different question, but, but what we see from, from the high school standpoint, you know, the two high schools are going to remain, they are well balanced from an enrollment perspective right now. And, and that certainly is helpful. We see over the long term, they will continue to be able to accommodate the, the population of students that you have. And so, so from, from that standpoint, I think there wasn't a heck of a lot more for us to be thinking about from a high school perspective. So I think in conclusion, right? Everything is kind of staying the same as it is. We do have some items, I think, from, from the district perspective to keep a weather eye on, right? Which is this continued use of capacity and the impact of enrollment. And then how to balance all of those things out, given all of the programs that you're trying to provide. And so I think with that, we're, we're happy to take questions on, on any of this.
Meredith?
So I have two questions. The first one would be, New York State has been one of the states that are having a mass exodus issue the past few years. Have you taken that into account?
Yeah. So, so as, so one of the things that we are looking at is that change in sort of total population as well, out, community population? And so, so from our perspective, there's not, there's not enough of that that, that indicates that we're going to get a real down into the, additional down into the right change in enrollment.
Okay. And my other question is, we kind of came into this in my perspective, because we had some schools' elementary class sizes were busting at the seams and we had other ones that had 12 kids in a class. You were suggesting kind of leaving everything the same, which puts us in the same predicament that we got, you know, respectfully before we hired you guys. So I'm kind of confused on my end, how we solve that problem. And I thought that's kind of why we were coming to you guys who were more the experts. So, because we still have schools like Merrimack that have, you know, 12 and 13 kids in a class, and we still have schools with like, you know, Winona that are, the classrooms are busting. It's not fair to the children in either aspect, and it's not fair to the teachers. So you don't have a suggestion for solving that?
So I, I think we would want to probably look a little bit more at the class size component of it. What, what we looked at is if we started to move a bunch of students, it, we weren't necessarily solving the problem in any way, we were moving the problem. And so
We weren't balancing?
Yeah, from a balancing perspective. And so
But don't you want to balance?
No, no, no. It, it wouldn't balance, it would just move where the problem was. So, so instead of, instead of individual locations where we had classes busting at the seams and other ones low, we would still have places where classes were low and still have places that were busting at the seams, they just might be different places. And so, so that was something, but, but I think it is, I mean,
Confused.
We're happy to look at it, you know, in more detail, if you'd like.
Meredith, I think, I think Meredith's question is that, we have, you look at projections like 29, 30, okay? You have 627 kids that you think are going to be in Linwood. You have 331 kids that are going to be in Merrimack. It's a huge discrepancy. Is there any way of, of balancing those numbers? I know you mentioned earlier about maybe taking the hub, students at the hub and the new developments, and maybe funnel them into, into Merrimack to kind of bring those numbers up and try and balance it out. But is there any way of, of balancing those numbers without doing a full redistricting that's going to affect thousands of kids?
Yeah, so I think the, the challenge as well is
I'm just saying, I thought we were going to get a suggestion of maybe redistricting to balance this out, because it is the problem now, and it is the problem of the future. You know, the, the fact that we're going to get 41 moral school kids, that, that's nothing. But the fact that one elementary school still has very low enrollment, and you guys are projecting that that elementary will still stay with very low enrollment, and the ones that have high enrollment will continue to get higher enrollment. So I was under the impression that we were hiring you guys to give us a solution to balance this issue. And you've, you've shown us that the issue will continue on, and it will not be fair for us to have 26 kids in one class in one part of the district and 14 in another. The children aren't getting the same experience, and that's not fair. And it's also not fair to our teachers to have, you know, their colleague is teaching 12 and 13 kids while they're teaching 26. It's not fair. So I really thought that we were going to come out of this better than we went into it, and I feel like, I feel like we didn't get anywhere. You told us what we already knew, I feel like.
Well, one, one of the issues is that we, we did take a look at what would happen if we started moving boundaries around. And it became circular. You have, you have a large number of elementary schools. So take Merrimack, okay? So we pulled kids into Merrimack, okay? So we, it drive, it's going to drive the enrollment somewhere else differently, okay? So we chose not to do a major redistricting. We did not think it would immediately solve the problem. But we did, I think we talked about Merrimack, that it's, it's being held for developments that may come in that won't necessarily be redistrict, but new kids coming in can go into Merrimack.
No matter where they live?
Well, no, it, it developments that, that are close by. I think it was one
And these developments are, are not bringing in tremendous amounts of children. You know, there's a, there's a 300 student discrepancy between two of our schools. The hub is not bringing us 300 students, not with most of it being studio apartments that are extremely expensive and
Well, there was a difference in sizes of the school too, so, yeah. So that, that makes a difference also.
It's, you know, again, if we, we couldn't move hundreds of kids in there if we wanted to, because we don't have the rooms for them.
Tim, if you could just speak into the mic.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, we couldn't move hundreds of kids in the, in there if we wanted to anyway, because there's no, not rooms for them. I mean, one, and so, so one of the things that we were trying to do is be sort of judicious from, again, primarily from the lens of looking at closure. But I think, you know, we, we can provide insight into, because it is part of the analysis, we can provide insight into some of the class size components of it and where some of that shifting can, might, might be able to occur. So, so we'll look back at that.
And there are a couple of constraints also in the district. When we first started the project, one of the first things I said to superintendent is that I am amazed about a number of children live outside of their own tenant zone. Then what we found out about that is because of the nature of your special needs programs, that does eat up a lot of rooms in a lot of the buildings. So you may have room, but you've got numbers of rooms that can only accommodate six kids, 12 kids, 14 kids. Okay, that was, so that was a big constraint in terms of, of redistricting and making room. Second restraint that we put on this is that, and it's an equity question, we took out of every single building, every single building, art room, music room. So we made sure that that was not a classroom that could be absorbed, but, but with students. So we wouldn't want to take students out of school A, put them in school B, but use a music room to accommodate those kids. This thing hates. So, so again, we were operating within those constraints, okay? Special needs concern, reserving rooms for special needs programs, not just self-contained kids, but resource rooms, so, small group instruction kind of things. So, and again, as I said, art and music to make sure that was, that was in every building. So there were a number of constraints that prevent that from happening. And also, if you, if you think about the map, okay? So, and, and Tim addressed it earlier in terms of adjacencies. In order to move kids, we have to make sure that the schools that are getting them can absorb other kids. So it, it's a difficult task, and it is, you know, it is problematic, but we'll take a little, another look, we'll take another look at it, but
Respectfully, it is a difficult task that requires a professional, and that is why, in my opinion, we came to you guys. But personally, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'm personally saying that I feel like I knew this, and that's why I came to you, and you're telling me what I already knew. I was looking for a solution to a very clear problem that we have. And I don't feel like I've gotten that from you, and that's just my own opinion, but I just feel like we just spent all this time and all this money and all this presentation, and I don't feel like I'm any better off than I was before this. And I'm no expert, but I could tell you that we're off balance, and we need to be balanced to make things more fair and equitable. And yes, we do a great job. Our administration does an amazing job at using up the space. But if you tell me that it has anything to do with special ed, those poor kids get bounced sometimes year to year or three years in one school, and then they go to a different school. So I don't believe that we're keeping everything status quo because of our special ed kids. I don't believe that for a second. I believe that that might be the easier route to go, but none of us signed on to be a board member to make easy decisions. It's because of the hard decisions that we came here. And I just, I don't mean to be disrespectful to you, but I just, as a consumer of your product, I feel I did not get what I was intended to get.
Keep in mind going into this project, okay? Going into the start of the project, one of the concerns of the board, of members of the board was that we needed to close a school, for whatever reason, okay? The project told us that you don't have the capacity in the district to close a school. And the fact of the matter is that the enrollment decline is significantly leveling out. So we're stuck with the number of rooms that we have, the number of schools that we have, the location of each of the school buildings. And that's not to say that we can't take another look at it, but I think that, I think Tim, Tim said it earlier, okay? To maybe, how can I say this? We may be able to level out the enrollment, but that may mean moving thousands of kids. It also had, or hundreds, at least hundreds of kids do that, because it becomes a circular motion. Second of all, what's the impact on transportation costs if we start to do this? You know, I'm not going to mention a, a school, a, a school district that we're working with, but years ago, they solved the problem of that by doing non-contiguous boundaries, okay? It's caused, and over the years, it, it, you had children living up here going to schools over here, going like that. And as, as their enrollment leveled out, they hired us then to consolidate the boundaries. And I think that we don't want to recommend, we don't want to recommend non-contiguous boundaries in this district. Can we solve a problem by cherry picking a number of kids in one, one zone and bringing them into Merrimack? I'm, I'm saying, can we? Yes. Is it desirable? Absolutely not. So, I mean, there are methods, we just don't think it's this, we don't think based on what we've done, is that given the current number of schools, number of classrooms, locations of, of special needs classes, your program itself, that we don't, we don't know if it's, if it's possible that a great disruption to the school district, we've been changing, we've been changing the character of the school district. Yes, sir.
Hold on a second. Jessica, and then when it comes, yes.
I just want to make this clear for the Merrimack community. Their smallest class is 19, their largest is 28. The issue, and that's this year, but also we are utilizing all, like for Ms. Tucci, she has the smallest student population, but we are filling that to try to maximize her building usage by putting more UPK in there. She has BOCs in the special ed to balance it out. I don't want it to sound like Merrimack has nobody in it and all the classes are so low, because I think after last year in particular, that community feels a little bit targeted. And I just want to make it clear to the community that, you know, they do have a class of 28, you know, it all depends on the year. Sometimes it works out that they're all evenly balanced, and sometimes it doesn't.
Jessica?
I'm just going to echo Meredith's sentence, sentiment. I think it's really important that us as a board and you as our demographer address the variances of class sizes throughout the district. For example, if you're east of one road, you might have 20 in a class. If you're west of another, that same road, you might have 28 in a class. And it is something the community has been very vocal about. We, we do dict, we, we, we change the locations of the special ed classrooms as long as it goes up to the feeder schools. So there is a flexibility in where we're putting those UPK program, Little Angels, you know, the ICT classes. But I do think it's really important that we address this, this inequity across the district regarding class sizes.
Yeah. To be, to be really honest, I don't think there's any way to really get perfect balance across the school district. I just don't think, in my expert opinion, doing this for 25 years or so, I looked at this, okay? You gave us a target class size, right? In every school, we stayed below that target class size. Every school has to accommodate populations a little differently. And as the superintendent said, it, it's, there's breakage in grade levels. Some years, a grade level is high, it flows through. Some years, a little bit lower. We understand there's different sizes, that schools have different sizes. But again, and we're not opposed to taking another look at it, believe me, okay? I just honestly, my heart of hearts, after looking at this data for the last six months, don't think it's a real possibility without a significant disruption to the school district.
The class targets are different than what the actuals have been, and there is a large discrepancy of class size actuals versus
No, no, I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah. We'll provide back.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, Meredith?
Stephanie.
I'm sorry.
Wrong Volpe!
Stephanie, my apologies.
Wrong, it's all right. One of the things I just want to call attention to, because last year when we, I, I, it was a mistake that we named Merrimack, because we didn't do this kind of in-depth research, and we fell under the gun. And, you know, we picked the lowest enrolled school, which was not fair to the community. So one of the things that I've been paying close attention to for the past year is the fact that, yes, we have three school districts, uh, three elementary schools that are using other classrooms for outside programming for special ed. For example, BOCs is in Merrimack, Little Angels is in, you know, throughout, UPK is utilizing the extra space, which isn't really there because we're using it. So did you find that you saw we were using the building to almost capacity, if not evenly, close to evenly?
Yes.
Right, right. So, but, but, but every now and then through the years, we have seen dips in some schools and, and not in others. And that's not due to being inefficient, which we assumed before we hired them, right? We assumed that we were going to be able to close a school. That was our goal last year, was we're going to get, we're going to hire people and we're going to pick one fairly. And now they're saying that we can't do that without massive disruption. And if you look, Haigga has four additional rooms being used outside of our general education Two other schools, the same. One other school is using three others to, if you, and you match that to the projected enrollment, they're all lower because we're using other rooms for other placements.
I, I think what you're saying is, so last year, I, I get it. I wasn't on the board, I'm new to it. I think there was, like
There's anomalies, every
It was a knee jerk reaction to just say, we need to save money, so we need to close
It was a knee-jerk reaction to just say, we need to save money, so we need to close the school.
We also had a deadline that was like two days away.
I understand, I understand. But then when we did the, when they did more of the feedback of what it would save financially just to close a school, those kids have to go somewhere.
Right.
So now you're hiring teachers, so really, what are you losing there? You're not really saving a boatload of money that you thought was going to, it wasn't going to bail you out of anything. So it didn't make sense to do that just out of knee-jerk reaction. That's why we hired the demographers. That's why we took our time in this, trying to be very transparent in it. And that's, obviously, we're all getting this information that we kind of knew that we were pretty packed up.
Right. My point was, is that we're looking, you can't just look at the general education enrollment numbers. You have to see that we're utilizing other rooms in these buildings because we were trying to fill them to make sure we're fitting the needs of all our populations. You know what I mean? And that's, that's all.
Mike, I serve you.
So we hit on, we hit a lot of the points I was thinking of. But let me just start off, well, you're aware, the district's going to get ready to go into its budget season now, and we've had some financial distress, as I'm sure you're all aware. So we did start on this journey with the thought that we could save a significant amount of money by closing facilities, right? So a couple of things I just want to get on the record, because we're getting ready to budget season. First question, of course, is, I'm not a demographer, you're a demographer. If another demographer looked at your methodology, this would be deemed very traditional demographic study. There'd be no question, we didn't, there's no, nothing in here that someone could question that, that's not really traditionally done. Okay?
It's throughout New York State.
So throughout New York State, any demographer would probably come to the same conclusions based on what we, based on the parameters we gave you. Right? So what you just said to us here is that the closing of a school, any school, elementary school, middle school, high school, is not feasible without tremendously impacting our academics. We would have to make major changes, such as either getting rid of UPK out of the classrooms, we'd have to do, also raising class sizes, perhaps we'd have to make other things happen that would probably negatively impact our children.
I think.
Is that a fair?
What, I don't think we're in a position to rate the academic impact. What we, but what we would say is that the closing of a school would be significantly disruptive to ensuring that you're, that you're still doing all the things that you're doing now. You know, whether it would impact academic performance, that's not something that we would comment on.
And I just want to address, I'm sorry, I want to address what you had said. You've got those programs that we're showing at the end, you could reduce class size by taking back some of those classrooms. I mean, and I'm not saying it's a desirable thing to do, but remember, one of the things that happens when a district loses population, loses enrollment, you gain space. And even though you, over the years, you closed three schools, your enrollment continued to go down, so you gained space. So you take that space from what might have been general education courses and bring in other kinds of programs. But now those programs are solid, and you don't want to or can't use those. So it limits the number, excuse me, it limits the number of classrooms that we have for general education, especially special ed, because that will always, that will always exist and always have space. So that's the question. The question is, if you look at that school with four classrooms, okay, but those are being utilized by an outside program, that means that's something that you can't use. So the balances, are they revenue generating programs, okay? And is that important to the board? So there's numbers, so many issues involved when we start to look at class sizes and equity. It's all driven by available instructional space in the school building plus population and location, okay?
Well, I was kind of getting to the same thing, because one of the things I was going to say is, we could just do away with UPK, we could do away with all those other things that aren't not K through 12 education, and we claim all the space. We could do that. But that's tremendously negative impact on the community, right? So, you know, this is not something I think we'd want to consider. But what I really wanted to get on the record today is that when the budget season comes, that the community understands, we have been told by our demographer, who's done an unbiased study of this, it is not feasible to close a school to make that happen, to save money. We will need to find that money somewhere else. Are we all in agreement that's what he just told us?
That's correct.
Okay. So community out there, there will be no school closures, but the money that would have been saved by closing a school now has to be found somewhere else. That's what I wanted to get out of this. Stephanie?
Can I just ask one more question? And it's just to piggyback to Meredith. So why is redistricting not feasible? Why is that? And explain to me, because, you know, I don't understand, so I'm assuming the community might not understand, how is that not going to help? Because we want it, we, as, our goal is to make things equitable.
But you got it, okay. But in redistricting, there's a take, right? The take is enrollment out of a particular school. The put is, the numbers are going to put, numbers are going to put in there. So if two schools, if the two school, if one school can't accept the number of students coming from the other one, so then you go to the next school over. So it becomes circular. And so redistricting becomes, redistricting isn't just drawing a line, okay? Redistricting is taking a look, okay, if we move this block of students, okay? And say it's a community, or it's a fine neighborhood, okay? Not only is it a group of students, it's a group of students by grade level. So we remove this, and let's say, I'm not wearing my phone, so don't blame me. Anyway, if you, if you move students, if you look at those grade levels, so let's say in one patch, you have 15 kindergarten kids, six first graders, three, now you move that to a neighboring school, how does that affect the number of sections you need and class size in that school building? So now, got to say, now we've got to take a commensurate number of kids out of that building, and it just, it goes around and around and around. And we did test that, okay? We did test that. We did some what ifs, and they just didn't work, okay?
It's good for the community to hear that, because we had those questions, right?
Yeah, so, but that's, I think redistricting is a different question to closing a school for the purposes of saving money. We could also, we could have a redistricting conversation if we want to impact all the kids, but that's not, one of the things I wanted to draw out is that we're being told it's not feasible to close a building for the purposes of saving money, and I think that this report bears that out.
We have a question from Daniel.
Yes. Has the possibility of combining our two high schools been considered at all in the study?
This is no, that would create almost a 7,000 student high school.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, so, no.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. So I think the hard thing for people to digest, I'm sorry, does somebody have a question of it? Mike, Matt, you? I think the hard thing to digest is that, is that, you know, I went to this district when we had 18,000 students in the district, and, you know, we had two middle schools, and each middle school had about 1300, 1400 kids in it, you know? And now our middle schools are bigger, right? They're much, much bigger. We put a whole wing in for classrooms. And so it becomes, you know, for the community, they say, well, wait a minute. A lot of our members, a lot of our community members are graduates of the school, and they say, how is it possible that we can't fit them? There was 1,400 kids in that school when I was there. But I think you kind of hit the nail on the head when you said that, you know, the special education demands today are not the same demands that we had back in 1977 and 1978. You know, the number of rooms that are being used, okay, for three kids, six kids, didn't exist back then. And I think that's, you know, the people need to realize is that, you know, things change, you know, and the demands become greater. And, you know, we look at a building, go, oh, there's 50 classrooms, but maybe only 30 of them can be used for general education. And I think that's the important thing for people to understand it, that if this board, and one other thing, Mike's point is that if this board decided, well, we need to close a school to save money, UPK would be gone, okay? And while it would hurt the community members, it would really hurt the kids more than the community, because they need that foundation, okay, to be successful in kindergarten, first and second grade. You know, UPK today is different, and kindergarten is different than it was, like I said, 30, 40 years ago. So I think that the academic impact, the negative academic impact of losing an UPK program would be detrimental to our district. I really do, I believe that. You know, to Mike's point, you know, we're going into budget season. This board is doing everything they possibly can to make ends meet, you know, everything from determining whether or not we're going to go with paper ballots versus, you know, electronic ballots, and saving $20,000 there, and, you know, reducing certain things that we once had, you know, to have least impact on kids. And, you know, this is something I think that, you know, initially, we were looking at saying, well, you know, we could save $3 million, or we could save $2 million, but the impact is tremendous. And when you look at redistricting, and I agree, that if you have to redistrict the whole district, a kid that maybe was heading to north now is going to be maybe in, you know, heading to east. And they could have a sibling that's going to the, to one high school, and they're going to a different high school. So it's not as easy just to redistrict. You're talking about impacting thousands and thousands of kids. I think that's the most impactful, sometimes is redrawing lines. So, you know, I understand what Meredith's saying, we were looking for something different, and maybe we could look at that, you know, see how we could maybe adjust, you know, adjust the numbers a little bit more, to maybe try and balance things out a little bit by moving certain classes and whatnot. But that's going to be something I guess we can do, or do we want to charge demographer we're looking at that?
We'd certainly want the information that you have from the communities that are newer.
Sure.
And the communities you're speaking of, they're rentals, correct? They're not people buying houses in those communities?
And we can, we'll provide all of the, all of the feedback on the information that we gathered that shows, you know, class sizes by section, by grade, all of that, that you all certainly can use to evaluate some of this.
I think Jess kind of hit it on the head also, is we do have some, some of our programs are already moving from, they're not going to where they live in that local community. So if we have to balance out some of that, I don't know how much of an impact on the special ed kid if he's moving from, you know, if they live in Winona and they're going to Grundy, if we had to move him to, obviously, another north school, we want to keep the kids that are going that way to the same side, but that might be one way Patty can kind of.
The thing is, you know, sitting up here for a long time, just got to be careful how many times we, how many times we move those children. Because it's a tremendous impact on it, and it's not fair to the family or the kid to say, all right, you know what, this year you're here, but next year you're there, and then following your year. So you just got to be really careful.
One of the reasons we do have continuums is because in all hopes that we, the child progresses and they move from one class, one special class to another, they aren't changing buildings, they're moving within the building. So that's why we do have our 15s to our collabs, to our resource. If we start separating them out, that's when we're going to see students have to move buildings when they progress. And our hope is for all students to progress.
Jess?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Rob, for making that point. I graduated in '04, and I've been running this whole scenario on my educational experience. And, you know, our graduating class was so large, I didn't even know I graduated with Chris till recently. And we did not see the, they went to Bosse's. The special ed kids went to Bosse's or they were in one class. And so we've built a robust, inclusive special education program where they're involved. We've bought all these things in-house, and those are classrooms, which I, that lightbulb didn't go off until you just said it, because I'm like, you're right, how we manage those special ed kids from, we did then, where they went to Bosse's and we didn't really interact with them, to now where it's an inclusive environment is very different. So I, lightbulb went off when you said that, Rob, thank you.
We also used to have a lot of trailers attached to our buildings.
I don't ever, I never was in a trailer, but. Last, Stephanie, and then we're going to wrap this up.
You know, I don't tend to make things personal here, but with the special ed component, I have a 25-year-old graduate. 25 years ago when he was born, they were told to institutionalize him. So watching our special ed program be so robust and amazing and inclusive, but also keeping kids in the community has been something that I've been proud of for SACHIP. Even though, yes, we've had our bumps with having to move kids around sometimes because, you know, the placement wasn't appropriate, or they don't go to their home school. We're really trying to keep them in one spot so that they can continue their friendships, they can continue to be part of SACHIP, they can continue to be part of our community, because we are SACHIP. The other thing, which I'm not going to cry over, is we had 1,900 kids in my graduating class alone. So going to a 4,000 kid high school, I remember those hallways, I remember the classrooms, I remember the trailers, and being excited to have air conditioning. That's why you wanted to go to the trailers, that was right? I don't want that for our kids, I don't want that for our school district. That was way too many kids in one spot. And no one's thriving in that environment. You're barely making it through the hallways of north, was impossible. So, and I know I was one of the lucky ones, because mine was a smaller class compared to the classrooms above me. There were, I don't know what our max was at one point, but rumor has it, it was like 2,300 kids? No? What was, what was the largest? I had 1,900. It was like 1,800 and change.
I thought it was like 1,500.
Yeah, I think it was close to 16. I don't.
So we're bragging?
Yes.
Okay.
A little bit of an exaggeration.
Because it was crowded.
Sorry, Mike, I didn't want to put your age out. It was so crowded back then. We had over 20,000 kids, if you go back to the numbers. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mine was 2,700. 18,000, 19,000.
All right, Sabrina?
And we're allowed to talk about special, but there's also INL. Like, I don't want to say like, oh, we're, this is all because of special ed. There's INL. We brought Bosse's class, CTE classes back, so we're using a lot of rooms to offer a lot of things for our kids overall, not just special ed. It's the benefit all the, all the children. I personally, and I might be the minority on the board, I would love to see the data of a complete redistricting, just to see. I know nobody wants to move an East kid to North and all that, but I think we have to turn over every rock to say we looked at everything and make the decisions based on that. I know you said that you only looked at doing little movements, which I understand, that could cause a, you know, it's fine in fourth grade, we move a bunch of kids, now you have a bubble in fourth grade here. I completely understand that data. But I would love to see a complete redistricting, just to see what it would look like and if it's feasible, so that we can say, look, we looked at it, our numbers still will, we would still have these bubbles of kids even with a complete redistricting, just because I know we have a lot of community members who are concerned about class size. And if that is something that we could help in lower class size without having to add additional sections, I would like to see that personally. I don't know if we have five members.
We certainly can do that, but in terms of methodology, how we did this, what we did is we started the project by taking your current existing attendance zones. And we pulled all K5 kids on the elementary level into that zone irrespective of what school they went to, okay? That's what we started. So then I went to, we went to a committee meeting with Sheldon and superintendent, and we said, okay, we've got this number of kids in Cayuga. But we also, when we bring up the Cayuga actuals, we've got this number of kids in the Cayuga zone, but we've got kids in Cayuga all over the place, okay? So, and then it was explained, and some of them were gen ed kids, most of them were special ed kids, most of them were some kind of arrangement. So we took that, we took that tranche of kids, all special kids, out of that map, okay? Not that we weren't going to do something with them, but we wanted to see if we just took gen ed kids in each attendance zone, what would those numbers look like, okay? And then from that, we said, what kind of movement can we do? And we found it, we found it to be very difficult. As I said, we can certainly go back and take another look at it. So what we could do is say, okay, if we do this on a K5 basis and redistrict, then it becomes the district's issue as to where you're going to place the special ed kids, right? So if I say, now we go, we put all the K5 kids in the current Cayuga, this is the number, this is the number of classrooms, okay? Maybe we can move a few kids into the neighboring school, see what that number looks like, only on K5. Then we come back and we say, all right, if we've done this, this is the number of rooms we need per school, but we're not putting in any special needs kids. That then becomes a programming issue for the district. And you've got the continuum program, you've got all those different kinds of things that you need to contend with. So what happens when you start to bring those children back? So again, as I said, we can certainly take a look at that again, but again, I'm not, I'm not optimistic that we can do a heck of a lot, we can give it a try, okay? And one other thing, it's one, address one of the things to, I was a school administrator a hundred and 42 years ago, but I remember at, at, at that, there was a time, there was a great desire to take special needs kids going out of district and bringing them back. When the population was up to here, not just here, everywhere, okay, we were using every classroom, we had no choice. As the population shrunk, it became a great idea to bring the kids back and for numbers of reasons. First of all, primarily be in their own community, okay? Be with their friends, not come home at day and everyone's playing ball or doing that part of it. So that, that's a primary reason. But also, if you look at transportation budgets, just go back 20 years ago, okay? And take a look at the cost per student gen ed and the cost per student special ed. And there were districts that were paying as much as $3,000 and $4,000 a year to transport kids, and you probably had the same experience here, to transport kids that you brought them back, so it had numerous benefits, but trunk your availability of classrooms, okay? Which goes back to what you were saying before.
Ross, just one more thing on what Sabrina said, if you could look at a total redistricting, because we place the continuums every year anyway based on availability. So I think what Sabrina's asking is, don't worry about the special ed classes, we can take care of that, we do that yearly anyway.
Well, the other question I had too is, when you were doing all of this, you, did you look at different models within the, in the district of changing from like a K to, a K to two building? None of that was looked at, just the feasibility of?
Sorry?
We, we didn't, we didn't look at any grade reconfigurations.
No, you didn't, so, okay.
All right, any other questions? Thank you guys for coming out tonight and as soon as you guys can get that information to Superintendent, we'll take a look at it, thank you.
Pleasure.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Don't take your clicker.
Here brings us to our student board, student board member report, Daniel?
Hey, what's up, guys? So to start, for starters, we had our football team season end, they had a great season, they won seven and three. And what they really did was brought students together at Satcham North and brought, had our community really together and had every game being loud and having a lot of fun. And next I'd like to highlight the Dirty Dozen Thanksgiving Food Drive slash Fundraising Committee at Satcham North. So they've been doing a lot of good work and it is an entirely student ran, student organization that is providing meals to over 1,000 families this Thanksgiving and students have been working, thank you. Yeah, it's a really amazing thing they're doing and students have been working really hard to reach their fundraising goals and they are looking for food or monetary donations and you can find further info on all Satcham socials.
Great, thank you, Dan. And then Ms. Trumbetta's got?
Yeah, I have Mia's report, she's at her gymnastics awards night, so congratulations to Mia. She's a little sad, her senior year, but she wanted to highlight this weekend that Godspell is being performed at the high school and they did snippets today so some of the students could stop in and see some of the acts and get excited about joining them this weekend. The shows are tomorrow night and Saturday, Saturday night at East and I believe there's a matinee right on Sunday. North, North is performing puffs and they are performing Friday night at seven and Saturday at seven and our students are beyond talented. So if you've never seen one of our high school performances, please join us, you'll be amazed. Mia also wanted to congratulate the student government for their food drive, they've been very busy and they'll be delivering their boxes next week for the families in need. Mr. Antonetti has began implementing his character coins throughout, highlighting students that are caught doing the right thing. And then also winter sports started Monday for both high schools, so we're excited for another season. And congratulations again to our Satcham East field hockey team who went up to states this past weekend. They lost in the semifinals, but they left Long Island undefeated and we're extremely proud of them.
Okay, brings us to item D, the approval of minutes from November 4th, any motion please, Ms. Sernia, second by Meredith. Any questions, any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, brings us to visitors, I think we have three or four visitors. Joy Diaz?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Superintendent, thank you for hearing us out. We come to you with a little bit of sadness, we need some help with some issues, there is some bullying occurring in Sagamore and following what we believe is parent protocol, we have reported this to the teacher and we have taken down dates and times. We have not received help, so we therefore went to the vice principal and we, again, did not get help, we did not get emails back, we did not get any phone call. And as you know, I think that bullying is most prevalent in middle school, not so much high school, not so much elementary, but middle school, I can't tell you anyone I don't know who hasn't been bullied and we all know how serious it is. So where is the bully box? Where is the phone calls back? Where is somebody stepping in with perhaps a child psychologist? We need answers because this is how we teach our children to handle problems. In the real world, we don't get bullied at home, we don't get bullied at work and if we do, we report to HR, we report it to the owner of the company or the administrator and they do something or we quit, but our children can't quit. So we look upon the teachers and the administrators to take care of our children. We trust you with them, we love them, we protect them and it's your job to do that when we can't. And if the, our children go home and they commit suicide or they hurt themselves, it's on you guys. Because we are here in this place because we did what we were supposed to do as parents, which is reach out, have a civil conversation, let everyone know this is happening, but yet it's still occurring. The children are still coming home crying, sad, angry, not feeling like they're safe at school. This should never be, ever. This should be something that should be nipped in the butt, this is something that we tell the teacher and it should be handled, you know? This is, this is 2025, this is still happening. How many more children, how many more middle schoolers are going to have to feel this way? Feel useless, feel sad, feel angry, feel defenseless because we're reaching out and we're telling them the teacher will protect you, the vice principal will protect you. Now, now we're saying, well, we're reaching out to the board, maybe they'll protect you. If not, we're going to the superintendent, we want her to protect you. We don't want to say, hey, you know, you guys, we, we're going to go hire lawyers now to protect our children. That's not what we're here to do, we're not here to threaten the board, we're here to ask for help.
Ma'am, you're approaching three minutes, if you could just?
Ms. Jess, we?
I believe I've said what I've, I've come here to, to say. I need someone to investigate what's going on at Sagamore and to stop the bullying. It should not be tolerated and, and it can't be tolerated. You, everyone here needs to protect the children.
This is, this is the first that we're hearing of this and certainly we're, we're going to look into this matter because we think bullying is very, very serious. Absolutely. All right. Amos, sir, Zavakos?
That's me.
If you want to come up.
I spoke to you, I'm still getting nowhere with the school. I've had it.
If you could speak into the microphone.
I.
Yeah.
Dad, I've spoken to Mr. Lawson, I spoke to the principal, I spoke to the assistant principal, I get nothing but different stories, no one knows what they're talking about. Many times it's been reported, I asked for incident reports, one tells me, I'll have it to you, one tells me none were ever made. I'm done, I'm literally done. When my kid comes home crying because nobody's helping him, what do I do? I'm here, I'm here. I've went to Satcham my whole life, I've went to school with Mr. Buckstein. Now it's worse. What do I do as a parent? Sorry, I'm just focusing on you.
Yeah, so I'm going to say you have a 100%.
I have no more when it gets to sexual harassment, now, now we got a problem. I shouldn't have a 12-year-old come and say, what is this? I shouldn't have to explain it.
Yeah.
What do I do?
Well, you brought it to the board, so we're going to, we're going to look at and address the issue.
I hope so, I hope so because you know what? It shouldn't be this, not at all. And I don't think anybody wants their kids to go through this. If you heard what these kids said, it's brushed to the side from these teachers. Why aren't they getting suspended? Why aren't their parents getting a call? Because if they said it to you guys, forget it. It's not, it's, I'm sorry, it, it's really not acceptable to me.
Not one more hour, not one more day.
It's not acceptable.
That's true.
And I know you said you were going to look into it. I'm just getting many stories from so many personnel of Satcham. What do I do?
What are you going to tell her kid if her kid goes home and kills herself? Oh, we looked into it, we looked into it. That's not enough.
It's not, that's not acceptable to me.
Well, as I said, bringing it to the board tonight, we're certainly going to discuss it and we're, obviously it's, it's a personnel matter, if there's something going on, we're going to discuss it and then somebody will definitely get back to you tomorrow.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. All right, we, we need to gather more information about.
It's a student issue, so we will discuss it, but we can't do it in public.
Is that still utilized? An anonymous bully box that you can go in and?
Not that I know of, no, no, but.
Maybe that's something that you could reutilize in the school because that was something that the students could put in, I'm getting bullied anonymously and not get repercussion from it, I'm just saying anything we're trying to say.
Sure, absolutely.
Is all personnel supposed to have training?
Well, yeah, all, I don't want to go back, all of our teachers are certified, all of our teachers are certified, they look for, they, they're required to take a child abuse class, they're required to do different types of PDs on exactly identifying this type of behavior. So absolutely, but just give us, if you can just give us tonight to look into what's going on, get some feedback from administrators and certainly somebody's going to get back to you tomorrow and we'll address the issue with Sagamore, see what's going on.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
And Sabiana?
I think they both summed it up, this has to end, things have to be done. We took our time to come here to speak for all you and hopefully we did not waste our time and something gets done. Absolutely unacceptable. I know there's G, GCN training that everybody has to go to and they're all aware of it, everybody in the school district has to do that training so they know what type of training they have to do and things should be changed.
We will certainly, somebody will get back to you tomorrow, absolutely. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for your time.
Greg Kelly? Is he still there?
Already did that. I know it. Board members, Superintendent Trumbetta, cabinet members, my name is Greg Kelly and I'm an active Satcham community member for, with 24 years dedicated as an educator in neighboring school districts. Today I stand before you with compelling evidence that our district has the opportunity to transform the financial future of every student we serve. The data is clear, the momentum is undeniable and the time for action is now. We are witnessing an unprecedented shift in American education. Since 2020, the number of states guaranteeing all public high school students will take a personal finance class before graduation has more than tripled, going from eight to 27. This isn't just a trend, it's a recognition that financial literacy is, is as essential as reading, writing and arithmetic. The students in Satcham deserve to be part of this movement. The data reveals a troubling reality about fractured access to financial education. By implementing a standalone personal finance graduation requirement, we ensure equitable access for all of our students regardless of their background or circumstances. The research identifies three critical components for successful implementation. At least one semester to cover financial literacy content areas in depth, a standalone course to allow students to be taught with consistency and fidelity and required for graduation, ideally in 11th or 12th grade when financial education is most relevant. This isn't about adding burden, it's about strategic curriculum design that prepares students for real world success. Consider what our graduates face, student loans, credit decisions, housing costs, retirement planning and an increasingly complex financial landscape. We have the opportunity to ensure 100% of our students graduate with comprehensive financial literacy skills. This isn't just education, this is economic empowerment. The transition doesn't have to be overwhelming. There are many organizations that provide, such as Next Gen Personal Finance, that provide extensive support at no cost, including curriculum crosswalk to state standards, professional development and ongoing implementation assistance. They've already provided 247,000 teacher professional development hours and $6.3 million in implementation grants. Board members, I urge you to position our district as leaders in financial education. Let's not wait for state mandates, let's be proactive in serving our students' needs. The evidence is overwhelming, the support systems are in place and our students' futures depend on the decisions we make today. By adopting a standalone personal finance graduation requirement, we join a national movement that recognizes financial literacy as a fundamental life skill. We ensure equity, we prepare students for success and we demonstrate our commitment to their long-term well-being. The question isn't whether we could afford to implement this requirement, it's whether we could afford not to. Our students' financial futures are in our hands, let's give them the tools that they need to succeed. Thank you.
Okay, brings us to our item three, business items, we have a consent agenda A through C, any motion please? Stephanie, second by Michael Sernia, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item four is budget adjustments, in motion please? All right, Stephanie, second by Dennis, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item five, we have a personal consent agenda A through I for our teachers, motion please? Matthew Bowman, second by Meredith Falpe, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item six, we have a personnel consent agenda A through F for our support staff, any motion please? Matthew Bowman, second by Jessica, okay? Any questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item seven, contracts, we have a consent agenda A through D, any motion please? Michael Sernia, second, Stephanie, sorry, Meredith, sorry. So we have a motion and a second, any questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item eight, we have consent agenda A through B for donations, any motion please? Michael Sernia, second, Jessica, questions and discussions? All in favor?
I'm looking at it, donations, I, I'm assuming this is Chris, our security guard at East who's donating his Peloton bike, so just want to tell Chris thanks because he does a lot of stuff and that's pretty cool that he was able to donate this to us.
And if we can get letters out to, you know, both donors, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, so a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item nine, we have committee on special education consent agenda A through B, Matthew Bowman, second by Stephanie, any questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 10, brings us to monthly reports, any monthly reports from any of our liaisons? Stephanie?
It's not legislative and we didn't have a meeting, but the diversity committee is doing some really great work and email, so I wanted to acknowledge it because they're doing some, some good stuff.
Okay, any other, Meredith?
Stephanie came up with a really good idea, but I guess you forgot it.
I did.
Michelle, we're in need of a bus to go up to Albany, do you think that it would be, it would be feasible for us to use the Board of Ed budget for that? I thought probably not, but.
Let me, let me explain my rationale. We have, because it's a Board of Ed subcommittee and we haven't been using it for conferences or anything, could we use that funding to advocate for the school district by going up to Albany and using it under a Board of Ed subcommittee rationale so that we didn't have to ask other school district entities to either donate it or fund it, you know? So is that something we could do out of the money that we put aside?
Let me, let me check the board codes and I'll put it in the Friday packet, I just need to see line, line items, what we have.
And then, and he just joked that some of ours have a big car, we do have a, a option. So do I, I have a nine passenger, we will caravan if need be, but if, and that's awesome, do you want to come? But, um.
Did you have a two-seater?
Oh, it's a two-person, not that car, no.
Yeah, both people.
But I didn't know if there was a, a way that we could, you know, we, we've been trying to get to Albany for years and I think we need to make this a priority, especially with all the tasks we have to do. Yeah, so you have to get a bigger car then.
It's certainly, if you could put something in the, in the Friday pack.
Yeah, and thank you, Meredith, because I completely left the brain.
We'll talk, Michelle and I will talk, okay?
And you?
Okay, any other board committee reports? Yep.
We met last time at curriculum council, I do want to thank Greg Kelly, who's a member of that committee, and we do have a financial literacy piece coming in with the portrait of graduate and requirements and I think it's a really good idea that we do think of it as a standalone instead of just, okay, we're going to talk a little bit about it when they take this math course, so we're going to check that box. I think we're a benefit to children greatly to, you know, I could even think of my own kids, I mean, they get hundreds on Regents exams, but when I talk about interest rates and, and getting the credit card debt, they look at me like I have 10 heads, so I would love to see that happen in our classroom. So that was something that came up at our curriculum council and I, I appreciate Mr. Kelly coming and speaking tonight and, and stating that that's something we should be looking at trying to fit into our curriculum sooner than, than later.
Now, we used to have career and financial management for graduation requirements, we still, we don't have it anymore?
It's no longer a requirement.
So, so, so there's something coming down the pike, right, with career and financial management? With career and financial management and climate.
That's what I, that's climate studies. But that's what Sabrina is speaking about was coming down, is trying to implement it within our curriculum. And that's what Greg and Sabrina are talking about. Instead of implementing it and tying it into the curriculum, have it be its own freestanding curriculum.
Would that be an elective or like a requirement? It's a requirement, I think.
Become a requirement. So I think every student, I mean, I know when I went to school, we had tracking back then, but certain students took consumer math. And I remember I'm looking at it like I would love to take that class. I want to learn this stuff instead of having to figure it out when I get to college, when I start having to pay credit card bills and loans and, you know, get a car and all that. So I think it's just something that's beneficial to every kid, whether you are heading, whatever path you're going on, we all need to understand how finances work so we don't get ourselves into debt.
Patty? It's not, it's not required, but we do have it at North, don't we? Thomas took it two years ago.
Yes, we offer it as an elective.
Yeah, it's great to mandate it because it was a great class. I mean, it taught him so much that, you know, I've said, don't waste your money on Wendy's till I'm blue in the face. But then when his teacher was like, do you realize how much money you waste on fast food? He was like, do you realize how much? I was like, wow, that's great. So yes, parents tell their kids these things, but when it comes from a teacher, it's definitely a lot better accepted, received.
Yeah, committee reports? Okay, closing comments. Allison, any visitors now? All businesses, nothing on here. Board discussion items, we had them all in the superintendent's report section. Future items for discussion. Jessica?
So in light of the fact that we're not able to close a school, we obviously still have to fix our budgetary crisis. So I think it's really important. I'd like for us as a board to explore like some sort of community survey or something because I think it's really important where the values are for our community and not just the people that show up at board meetings or the people that are loudest and making assumptions based on, you know, our anecdotal experiences in the community. But, you know, making these decisions based on facts, not feelings and having it be data-driven. So I'd like us to possibly explore a sort of survey to the community on, you know, again, plan it now because we don't know what it's going to look like. But I'd like some information on what the community wants are.
You okay with that? Looking to put together a possible survey to connect the community?
Do you want a survey or you want this to be a future discussion item?
You want a future discussion item?
I think before we develop a survey, we kind of need to know what we're proposing or considering. But I would like for that to be a future discussion item once we have a better plan of what we plan on doing moving forward.
You do that? Okay, Stephanie?
Another thing we forgot with the legislative committee, but now could possibly fall under future discussion item. But one of our elected officials asked if we were going to do the forum again. Not the big forum, the little forum we did, the roundtable. So I was wondering if that's something that the board wants to discuss later because I missed my opportunity in the other section.
Okay, that is a future discussion items.
Yeah, because, you know, to be asked and to be acknowledged that that was a great forum. And some of the other elected officials went off and are now taking some of our suggestions and working on them from last year, which we weren't aware of. So I think we inspired them and I love that for us. So, and the fact that they're asking to come back, which, you know, bonus. So can we put that on?
Do we feed them?
No, no, we didn't feed them. We were very rude.
All right, yeah, we could add it as a future.
Yeah, we can.
Is that turning? So it's a future discussion item would be budget. We're going to be going into December soon. So Michelle, I'm sure you've already had Ron starting to look at how we're running with, running, right? Run rates and what you think you're going to have leftover and stuff like that, right?
But it's very preliminary because while it is November, we're still only now getting some of our September invoices. So it's too early in the year, but we do have some projections in some of our codes. So we have started the process. So the official first report would be in January.
Yeah, okay, I was going to say late December, that'd be.
But in December, we will do a brief budget update because at that point we will, I think December 5th is the deadline where personnel will have all of the salaries put into the new salary schedules. So once that's all reviewed, I'll pull those into budget. That obviously is the biggest portion of our budget and then the benefits that go along.
Yeah, when do they come again? When do we get that?
I probably will do that the second meeting in December because December 5th is when personnel will have everything completed by. And then I'll pull it into the budget and then I can do, you know, payroll taxes and TRS and ERS calculations based on that. We should be getting the night shift rates.
When does that come out?
I believe last year we got it right around Thanksgiving. So anytime, either next week or by the first few days of December, they usually put those rates out. So I'll have that calculation done and that'll also, we're in the process of open enrollment right now. That closes next Monday. So once we have that information, we'll be able to start doing the calculations for those opt-out payments. So those are all our big numbers. So I'm looking to have all of those items done for the second meeting in December. And then we'll go into, you know, our usual breaking it down by the different areas with curriculum, athletics, support services, and things like that. This week we did start our meetings with the department heads. And we'll have that in the Friday packet with everyone as well. We had, I think, three departmental meetings yesterday. We had a couple today and I think we have five tomorrow. So we are meeting with all of our departmental supervisors and getting their requests and needs for the upcoming school year.
Okay, again, this is just, I think we need to be as proactive as we possibly can because I don't think it's going to be pretty. Just the night shift rates, as soon as you get those, if you could vote them. Because that's, that could be a big number for us. Meredith?
And I just wanted to make sure at the next meeting or maybe the meeting after that that we are discussing, like you had mentioned earlier, the paper ballots versus machines. Because it's definitely something that we should discuss out here.
I don't know if we should, like a presentation or just a quick discussion also too about how the change to electric buses. Because we just got that.
181-page document.
Beautiful report this past Friday packet that was fun reading. I don't know if something, again, to go to the legislative of looking at, maybe there could be a pause on that because that is something, what was it, $4 million?
No, it was seven or eight million dollars just for the infrastructure.
Just for the infrastructure, but then it was also.
And then for the buses. So we were looking at about $21 million. I mean, there is eight on it, but you're looking at eight over.
Right, I'm saying over the time, but when we look year to year, it's just an additional how many millions every year just to change buses that are probably running fine to them to be electric. So we're going to trash buses that could get us years to just switch over. And we're spending millions of dollars, again, of taxpayer money on buses that are already good and will be good for at least 10 years.
This is something that we've been complaining about to our legislature for a long time. You know, Doug Smiths in particular. I don't know how the board feels about sharing that report with him so he could see the eye-opener we got this weekend about what it would cost to actually, you know, implement that mandate. And it is a mandate, you know, by the governor's office. So I think they need to see, I think they need to see the report to see what the initial costs are and then what each bus costs. And I like that they had the charging too. You know, every single one of our routes, you know, how we would have to bring the bus back to the garage to charge it for an hour and a half so we could do the PM pickups.
And we did, when we met with the consultant, we were looking at, at the end of a PM route, you know, they had a chart in there about how many miles a bus could go, each of our buses after the, you know, afternoon pickup and drop off at home. And, you know, I guess the average was around between 20 and 30 miles. And when you think about sports and in the spring, and if we're going out to, you know, Hampton Beach or, you know, West Hampton Beach or something, we would be able to get there on that bus, but we wouldn't be able to get home. So then we would need to look at intermunicipal agreements with other school districts and towns to see if while our kids were playing sports, we could bring the buses somewhere to charge them and have a reciprocal agreement that when they're at Sagemore, they could charge here. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to get the kids home.
And I think the bigger issue too is that we actually, you know, we go out to different companies for busing. And those bus companies are going to be required to have electric buses as well. You could figure our costs are going to, we're going to multiply by at least four because the cost of those electric buses are four times the cost of a diesel bus.
Correct, correct.
Okay, Stephanie?
Do you want it as a charge for the legislative committee? Because it's a great point. And the other question, which is just to ask, what, how is upstate handling this? Because they go miles and miles and miles just to pick up children. Like it makes no, how is a 30-mile radius when, you know, that's crazy?
And then we get a less than a percent increase in our state aid.
But do we want this as a legislative charge? And I know we're out of.
I would, I would do what we charge you guys with first, like start working on that stuff. That's exactly what we don't want to do is throw too many things at you. This is just, right now, and it's, I think, infancy stages. This isn't even.
Well, my purpose of bringing it up is the community has to know that these are the things. They're so quick to say, let's cut teachers, let's cut administrators, let's cut this. But they don't realize that these are the things that we're getting thrown at us. So we're going to cut teachers and staff and our class sizes are going to go up, but we're going to spend millions on electric buses when we have buses that are going to last us 10 years. It doesn't make sense. And I think, I'm just saying it for the community to know, because we just got that, that they should see the numbers we saw to see how ridiculous this is and how much it's impacting our budget. And it's going to impact the education of our students because we have to pay for those buses. But what about the kids' education? That should be a priority. The money should be going straight to them, but now we have to use it for buses that are perfectly fine.
And the fact that we could buy four buses for the cost of one electric bus is absolutely crazy.
We could also utilize Chris to get something up on the website about it.
And when we are purchasing new buses, similar to with the capital projects, you'll notice it's in that transfer to capital line item, that has to be voted on by the community. So we have seen in the last couple of years, school districts that have wanted to start that conversion, maybe buy one or two buses, and they've put it out to their community. And the community has said, no, we don't want you spending $350,000, $400,000 on a bus. So what happens now when this law goes into effect where the governor says, you have to buy an electric school bus, but we have to put it to our community to vote? And if the community says, no, we don't approve that electric school bus, who wins? Like, what do we do?
I will say that since Newsday definitely watches our board meeting, maybe they could have a nice big spread like they did on the administrators and educators' salaries. Maybe they could do a nice big spread on what electric buses would cost every school district and how when you put your children on an electric bus that might not get them from point A to B, while it's going from point A to B, it might actually go on fire also. So Newsday, I hope you get that one out there.
Meredith, you stole them, I'm sure. All right, any other future discussion items? All right, before we go into exec session, on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to wish all of our teachers, our staff, our families a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. We hope it's filled with joy and laughter during this holiday season. So at this particular point in time, any motion to go into exec session to discuss contract negotiations? Okay, Stephanie, second by Sabrina, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Have a good evening, everyone.